I saw that weird girl.
Good evening, everyone.
He's one of your friends, shooter?
We had a brief executive session. We're back from that. I want to hand everything over to Mr. Rashid. So it's all you, sir.
Hello, alright, I feel much better, huh? Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out this evening. This is one of the best occasions, especially during our end-of-year activities, where everyone has worked so hard during the course of the year. And in the board of education, certainly, and myself, certainly like to take the opportunity to recognize all of you for your contribution to West Milford, whether it's in the school itself, whether you're a community member who's been involved with something with our students and doing something special, or belong to a specific group or club that has helped us. We truly appreciate that, and we thank you. Without you, we wouldn't be here tonight, so that's very important. So with that being said, I'm going to start, because we do have a long list, so let's try to move as quickly as possible, but we do want to give everyone the time to be recognized and have a nice hand and wish them luck. So I'm going to start with some of the people that perhaps are closer in age to me, maybe a little younger in some cases, and those of the folks who are going to retire from West Milford this year. So I'm going to start with six-and-a-half years of service, Ms. Wendy Donnelly, school bus driver, van driver. The following is here. Nine years in education and two years here at West Milford, our supervisor of guidance, Myra Harrington. Come on up. Thirteen years, William Griner, special class A at McAllen School. Not going to be here, that's it. Next, fifteen years, Donna High, secretary of elementary child study team at Maple Road School. Next one, I hope. Sixteen years, Peter Jacqueline, science teacher at the high school. Seventeen years, Theresa McCabe, grade four teacher, Westbrook. The teacher numbers are going up now. Twenty years, Abby P. Abbey, school bus driver, van driver. Twenty-one years, Emmanuela Gedecky, special class A at the high school. Twenty-two years, Holly Heratik, special class A at Maple Road. Twenty-five years of service, Joyce Gentles, special education teacher, Paradise Knoll. Here she is, yay! Congratulations. Thank you. Moving on, Kathleen Vares, twenty-five years as a school bus driver, van driver. Man cafeteria worker, aid, cook. Look at you, everybody. Patricia Rambowski, twenty-six years cook manager at Paradise Knoll, twenty-six years. Also, twenty-six years, Susan Weaver, school bus driver, van driver. Thirty years, Mary Beth Raymar, world language teacher at the high school. Thirty-one years, Melissa Cavagnino, special ed teacher at McAllen School. Thirty-four years of service, Kathleen Warren, encore teacher at Actua School. After thirty-five years in the district, living very close to the school itself, and a frequent diner at the Island Deli, from what I understand, we want to congratulate you, certainly we're going to miss everyone, but we're certainly going to miss this Mary Reinhold, thirty-five years principal at McAllen School. Mary will be with us through July, I believe, so that gives you plenty of opportunity to invite me over for a piece of crumpet cake, which I have not had yet, because I've heard how wonderful that is. And with thirty-six years, Mr. Richard Hetna, music teacher, who was a teacher after he left, finished up in December. Alright, I'm going to move on now to a big announcement for our district. You know, every year there's a number of teacher recognition and support staff, so for the township of West Milford, our overall teacher of the year, who works over at Paradise Knoll School, second grade teacher with a very nice smile, Miss Katie Bonifort. Teacher of the year, Miss Katie Bonifort. It was very, very interesting, when I went to bring Katie her flowers and announced that she was the winner of the district, she informed me that not only is she teaching second grade, she replaced her own second grade teacher of when she was a child at Paradise Knoll Schools, and that's a wonderful thing. That's a lot of years in one place. Congratulations. The following teacher is being recognized for his acceptance in the American School Band Directors Association, Dr. Brian McLaughlin. Congratulations. All that wonderful music we hear, all that wonderful music that we hear coming from our concert band and marching band and all the various ensembles under the director of Dr. McLaughlin, and a wonderful job, and being recognized with that honor, it's not an easy feat, so I congratulate him on that.
Although he's not here this evening to receive this award, I would like to acknowledge Mr. Eric Carson, who is very important, is generous gift of dictionaries to the third grade students in every elementary school in West Milford.
Moving on to that. It is with great pleasure that I announce this next individual, and we recognize him for his participation at all of our board meetings and giving us abundance of information from the high school, keeping us up to date, letting us know what goes on, he does more than I do, and I always let him speak first, so that he can get it all out there. A natural with a microphone, a natural, I could see this young man on TV in a few years, if we turn on our TVs and watch the news or some kind of report. We wanted to certainly congratulate Matthew Ventrella, and thank you. Congratulations. Matthew is a valedictorian, well? Student council president, which is why he has this wonderful job in board of education, and he will be attending a Boston College in September, although majoring in political science, two and four. The following high school student is being recognized... Something funny going on back there. She's being recognized for the attainment of the Girl Scout Gold Award. The Girl Scout Gold Award is the highest award the Girl Scout can earn, in addition to the many prerequisites. It consists of service projects that reaches out to the community and has a lasting benefit. Allison's project involved constructing a raised bed garden we're fencing on property of Paradise Knoll Elementary School. It also includes a compost bin and instructions for composting material that would otherwise go to waste. The bed is built solidly and is enjoyed by all the students at Paradise Knoll and will be for many school years to come. The students in the school are also involved in working in the garden. We call them the P.K. Sprouts Wabbit Garden, is that it? The Wabbit Garden, I like that. They also help create cement stepping stones for the pathways in the garden. To help the students and community, Allison created a booklet to inspire and teach others to build their own gardens. I'd like to acknowledge and welcome Allison Barelli. Allison Barelli.
Thank you, Mr. Rashid. This was supposed to be something Mr. Rashid was able to present, but I have a special connection to the student that we're going to be presenting this next award for the Eagle Scout, because in a moment, stay back there, Liam, we're going to talk about your project first. Sentimental to me, Mr. Liam Harrington was in one of my first grade, sixth grade classes as a principal, and now to see him become a fine young man is a very important moment for me. I was able to attend his Eagle Scout Court of Honor over the weekend on Sunday, where he was honored and accepted into the ranks of Eagle Scout. Very, very special moment for the Upper Brema Lake community, and the trip 146 that Liam is a part of, they are sponsored by the Upper Brema Lake Fire Department, and his project was able to renovate, they recently did a renovation of the whole building, his project renovated the flagpole, which is now a really tremendous symbol in the community. I was able to witness the first flag ceremony, which raised his flag that had been fallen over the Capitol Building in his name after receiving his Eagle project, so I could go on all day about Liam, but I'll cut it short. He was an Eagle Scout from the day I met him in sixth grade, and I'm sure he's going to continue that process in life, so Liam, come up and get on him. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Bill Kane, who's going to present our outstanding award since West Milford Special Olympics. At this time, I'd like to invite Coach Clay and all of her assistant coaches to come on up. So before we recognize our athletes, just a couple words about Coach Clay and her assistant coaches. So Coach Clay has taken our West Milford Special Olympics team from a small, mid-rod Mustang team into a district, a community-wide West Milford high school team. As you can see from the flagpole here in the audience, it's grown and it's grown and taken quite a footprint in our community. And I just want to thank her and all of her assistant coaches for all their hard work they put in each and every day throughout the year to continue to grow and support our Special Olympics program. Our program would not be what it is without the support of our volunteers. We have an amazing group of volunteers, and at this time, I'd like any volunteers for the West Milford Special Olympics team, where in the audience, please come up and be honored here. These children volunteer their time, many of them throughout the school year, and really learn the true meaning of community service. Many of them stay with the program for several years, from elementary school to middle school, all the way to high school. Alright, so now on to our athletes. The bond West Milford students are being recognized for their achievements in the West Milford Special Olympics. The West Milford members participated in the following events. Each athlete tried their very best and made us very proud. Wyatt Becker, track and field. Brooke Versetti, bowling. Ellie Butterby, basketball, track and field, summer game. Nicholas Sakuzo, basketball, bowling, East End. Matthew Burl, basketball, bowling, championship, summer game. Michael Carlson, bowling, track and field. Johnon Clark, basketball, championship, summer game. Jacob Plonkavinci, basketball, track and field, summer game. Dennis Foight, basketball, track and field. Joseph Curley, basketball, track and field, summer game. Jayden Foster, basketball. Vincent Freeman, basketball, track and field, summer game. Wes C. Berry, basketball, track and field, summer game. Heather Berry, basketball, track and field, summer game. Tara Gattis, basketball, track and field, summer game. Maggie Gujari, basketball, bowling, championship, summer game. Lori Halter, bowling, track and field, summer game. T.J. Helmer, basketball, bowling, track and field. Michael McClusson, basketball, bowling, track and field, summer game. Monty, basketball, track and field. Those next two girls were able to carry the torch for the summer games recently, this past weekend. Caitlin O'Neal, basketball, track and field, summer game. Jude Otto, track and field. Ashley Penn, basketball, track and field, summer game. Taylor Sanson, basketball, track and field, summer game. Rejana Sanzbietro, basketball, bowling, track and field, summer game. Alexandra Shamblyn, basketball. George Shaw, basketball, bowling, track and field, summer game. Megan White, basketball, track and field, summer game. And Jeffrey Youngren, basketball, bowling, track and field, summer game.
Mr. Dan, before they step away, I'd like the other Olympians, if they want to grab a water and a cookie before they go back to their...
No!
We're not done yet.
Oh, okay.
I appreciate that very much. So Coach Clay and her assistant coaches have been growing a young athletes program recently, and I have had the honor of being involved in that as a parent, and it's really been an amazing process for the Keane family. So the following West Milford students are being recognized for their achievements in the West Milford Special Olympics Young Athletes Program. Asher Simeon. Elliot Simeon. Riley Brand. Emma Hopman. Logan Hopman. Nathan Jordan. Samuel Payne. Truman Payne. Wilson Payne. Allison Kessler. Andrew Lockwood. Robert Fox. Emily Moeven. Jake Mullins. Joey Mulligan. Joey Martin. Madison Corello. Jacob Fitchett. Ryder Schomer. Naomi Brown. Connor West. And Sydney West. And Jacob Zara. And another round of applause for our special...
I think it's without going insane, but also thank you, Mr. Dan, for all your support, all of the time.
Girls, thank you, the students, for the honor of these. There'll be some open seats now. It's great seeing you guys. Don't be a stranger here on Clay's this week. Start on Thursday and Friday.
Go White Sox, she's gonna play up here right now.
Okay, on behalf of the Department of History and Social Sciences, it gives me a great pleasure to recognize our regional qualifiers for the National History Bay. Eden Becker, Maple Road. Timothy Butcher, Marshall Hill. Matthew Carroll, Mackinac. Colin Clinton, Mackinac. Shane Duffy, Marshall Hill. Uzo Valante, Mackinac. James Gatman, Paradise Noel. Ryan Hegel, UDL. JD Jones, Paradise Noel. Axel Malatah, Mackinac. Jay Nelson, Maple Road. Christian Hatton, Mackinac. Francisco Petrisillo, Maple Road. And Benjamin Taylor, Mackinac. Again, on behalf of the Department of History and Social Sciences, it's important to keep in mind that our students here work extremely hard in the National History Bay. Picture a spelling bee for being interrogated by Alex Trebek in history. It was impossible, but they did it. Several of these students are recognized in very quickly. Tim Butcher, Colin Clinton, JD Jones, Francisco Petrisillo, went to Chicago just recently to compete in finals, and he did extremely well. We're very proud of you. Thank you. And last but not least, and not to steal Mrs. Ryanhold's thunder, Matt Carroll, who said he has never been achieved in the Mackinac History Department's history, so to speak. He won the Triple Crown History Award, which consists of winning the National History Bay, the Geography Bay, and the Spelling Bay. Thank you very much.
At this time, the elementary principals will come up to present the awards for the Spelling Bee.
I'd like to call out Russell Fleming, who is the first place winner for grade four at your school. Our fifth for grade winner, Dustin Robbins. And Callie Moore, sixth grade. First place Spelling Bee of Paradise Noel is JD Jones.
First place in the Evergreen Lane School, Luke Mosey. First place winner, they go to a spelling bee sixth grader, Lauren Vaughn. One more round of applause for our Spelling Bee winners. You can go back to your seats now. Thank you. Good job.
Okay, now Dr. Matlos told you that we have a Triple Crown winner at Mackinac, and Matt competed against approximately sixty to seventy, seventh and eighth graders, and he was the overall winner of the whole school. So, our Mackinac School champ, Matt Carroll.
Glad we're following Mrs. Ryanhold with this next award because it has to do with character, and as we know, Mackinac School was voted the 2015 National School of Character. The following students received an award for writing an essay that was specially designed for them this contest about what it means to make character count every day, and I would say that the students at Mackinac certainly do know that. Our first place winner was Marie Parkin. Our second place winner is Jay Alito. Our third place winner is Mary Pilpington. And finally, we have Elizabeth Palazzo, fourth place. We'd like to thank the Rotary Club as well. The following students are being recognized as West Milford winners of the 2015-2016 American Legion Safety Essay Contest. I'll be joined by Mr. Gamble, the American Legion Contest Chairperson. For first place, we have JD Jones from PK. JD also came in sixth place in the state. Second place, we have Katie Smith from Mackinac School. And in third place, we have Emily Ginder from Mackinac.
The following students are being recognized as West Milford winners of the 2015-2016 American Legion Safety Coloring Contest. In first place, from Westbrook, Amelia Tulakowski. Second place, again from Westbrook, Chloe...how do I say it? Frydahl. And in third place, also from Westbrook, Caitlin Penn.
Very proud to announce the West Milford High School student being recognized as the first place winner in the West Milford American Legion for a historical contest, and particularly, I'm sure it will resonate with Mr. Gamble and all those who have served in the armed forces, that the winner of this contest is attending the United States Air Force Academy to study pre-med. Her name is Andre Hilario.
I would like to recognize the following students as West Milford's finalists in the 2015-2016 Elks American Essay, Americanism Essay Contest. I'll be joined by Mr. Solkees, who is the Elks Contest Chairperson. We have Nicholas Yodas from Mackinac School. George Barunas from UDL. Nicholas Selpower from Mackinac School. Ryan Davis from Marshall Hill. Samantha Terry from Mackinac School. And Abigail Zwiall from UDL. Congratulations again to all the winners.
These next students are finalists in the Elks Drug Awareness Contest, as well as Cynthia May, our Contest Chairperson. And we'd like to recognize Jennifer Scala from Westbrook, first place local state runner-up. A handful of words. In second place, also from Westbrook, Lauren Frye. And in third place, Jacob Chuarzal from Maple Road.
Some of the drug deals are right here. The following students are being recognized as West Milford's finalists in the 2015-2016 Elks Drug Awareness Essay Contest. I'm joined by who's the Elks Contest Chairperson. We have Alyssa Hedy from PK, first place. Abigail Posha from Maple Grove, in second place. And in third place, Sasha Villanueva from MacKinnon School. Congratulations again to our winners.
Our final category from the Elks Drug Awareness is the video contest. And I want you to remember this name because you're going to be hearing it from this young man down the road, I assure you. And the winner, both local and state winner, Frank Ladonna. Remember that name regardless if you could be hearing it. And second place, Justin Garrity and Rebecca Croniek. And I've just told that they were second place not just locally, but also statewide. And finally, thank you again to the Elks Club for their support and sponsorship of these awards. Thank you. Good evening. The following student, Marshall Hill student, is being recognized as a West Milford winner for the Passaic County Poster Contest, Scotta Kowitski.
Good evening. The next eight names are sixth graders from four schools in two classes in UDL, in lack of the numbers. These are the recipients of the first place prizes for the New Jersey Mathematics Competition, which is a rigorous challenging series of questions and problems that the students have all excelled in. My pleasure tonight to welcome Lennox Van Duncan-Achler. Also from Achler, Kai Posha. From Maple Grove, Abigail Addy Posha. Also from Maple Grove, Richard R.C. Sedole III. From Marshall Hill, Julianne Booth. Also from Marshall Hill, Dylan Orsino. Owen Paul Kipper from PK tonight, but Jake Wines is here from PK. At MacKinnon, we have a new beginnings program for some of our special needs students from West Milford. And the students that I'm about to announce are volunteers. They volunteer half of their lunch period to help out these students. They get involved in all kinds of activities, and we're very proud of their efforts this year. So with the following students, please join me up here. Megan Verone. Cody Effert. Kristen Graff. Haley Higisa. Melissa Ruby. Ashley Jacobs. Steven Leva. Matthew Lombardi. And Megan Rampola. I'd like to thank all of these students for their time this year. Thank you so much. The next MacKinnon student is being recognized for winning the West Milford Beautification Committee T-shirt Logo Contest. And her logo was featured on this year's t-shirt. I'd like to congratulate Ashley Santanelli. The following students were recognized this year during their seventh or eighth grade year as model citizens for the different months of the year. They're nominated by their teachers. It's voted on by a faculty committee. And I'm very proud of all the names that you're going to hear tonight. So if you're here, please come up, and Mr. Gorcsky has your certificate for you. Hope Calamari. Ryan Castles. Colin Flaiton. Kyler Graham. Alyssa Gunny. Maddox Mayo. Sean Partington. Ron Setford. Kate Brilid. Nicholas Federici. Riley Knight. Lauren McCormick. Matthew Mullen. Tori Roberto. Leah Payne. Sasha Villanueva. Sarah Chandler. Kayden Pofen. Jack Leonard. Kylie Montina. April Barkasano. Amanda Pink. Alyssa Kaiser. Axel Malatak. Sky Summers. Ryan Muniz Miller. Julia Bobb. Jeremy Brodeck. Riley Lane. Hallie Morell. So these before you are our seventh grade Citizens of the Month. So I would say they adjusted very well to MacKinnon School this year. So I thank you for that. Congratulations to all of you. So we'll add to that Sergio Adams. Sergio Armaz. Joseph Parzon. Matthew Lombardi. Nicholas Pluta. Megan Rampola. Darren Bosie. Renee Burns. Samantha Hazen. Ryan Maniscalco. Michael Nicholas. Althea Di Benedetto. Yuri...Yuri A. Jonathan Kenny. Kristen Graff. Joshua Leduke. Riley McGill. Mary Perefsky. Madison Avaka. Sarah Chmuleski. Delaney Garza. So I think you can see right up here why MacKinnon School was named a National School of Character with all these good students. So congratulations to everyone here.
This year, West Milford High School has been very focused on the theme of Highland Pride. All of our programs is really tied in with that theme of Highland Pride, which stands for perseverance, respect, integrity, and the dedication to excellence. We truly believe that these students and our programs at the high school are dedicated to excellence. And so we recognize these students, two students per month, who were nominated by and voted upon by a faculty committee and recognized as Citizens of the Month of our high school. So I'd like to recognize those students now. They saw their names on a big digital sign that was just a thrill of Highland Pride. And I'd like to recognize those students now. So the Citizens for the Month of March were Pre-Elk of the Hill. Brian Maygir. For the Month of April, Luke Vanover. I think both Luke and Preel retired from all that walking this week. Can't agree, right? And Stephanie Roche. For the Month of May, Teresa Thurnbacher. And Brendan Maygir. And for the Month of June, Glenn Dunlop. And Erica Morzal. West Milford High School students.
Good evening. I'd like to recognize now students at the high school who participated in the New Jersey Science League and competed against schools all over the state of New Jersey. They are Victoria Alucia. Ryan McQuarrie. Joseph Cummins. Robert Orme. Tina Ha. Sean Genison. Drew Pedikas. Kyle Will. Hallie Morell. Lucas O'Tassie. Don Petticucci. Brian Conroy. Abigail Fork. Jane Alucia. And Sam Anger.
And Sam Anger. The next award is for a student who expresses interest in robotics. That award is Emily Golden.
West Milford has enjoyed the chapter of the National Mathematics Honors Society we have had for ten years. My pleasure tonight to recognize the volunteers for their service and dedication. If they're not here, it's only because they're studying for their exams tomorrow morning. For President Christian Agostinelli. Vice President Laura Friedman, who is the Doctor of Art of the Union. And our Secretary is Caitlin Floss. And our Secretary Caitlin Floss for the upcoming exams tomorrow.
On behalf of the Department of History and Social Sciences, it gives you immense pleasure in recognizing the best delegates of our international debate team, AKA Model United Nations, Jordan Churchill. Megan Hogan, who unfortunately cannot be here tonight. Michelle Coating. And last but not least, Kayla Yuhas, who cannot be here. And the Department of History and Social Sciences would like to recognize not only our history department award winner for this year, but a leader of the model congress team, and that is Matthew Fencella.
Our next students are recognized for their selection to the North Jersey Area Band. We'll start with Macklin School first. We had four students. Yuri A. Daniel McGlocken. Marie Parkin. And Sophie Bell. Dr. McGlocken told me that this year we had the most students, we think, in the history of the school, certainly within his history of the school, ever selected to the North Jersey Area Band. So we're very proud of all of these senior high school students that were selected. Start with Daniel Dauber. Eric Johnson. Danielle Dryer. Jordan Dryer. Felix Gonzalez. Megan Hogan. Dominika Kuzinski. Zachary Keller. Alexander Person. Rebecca Cromier. Steven Lang. Eric Lindson. Melinda MacArthur. Madison McIntyre. Zachary McIntyre. Emily Perry. Steven Rampola. Christopher Sansone. Teresa Santa Lucia. Steven Sahin. Alexis Silverman. And Peter Sestia. And we had a very good showing in the All North Jersey Region 1 Band. Danielle Dryer. Felix Gonzalez. Megan Hogan. Rebecca Cromier. Zach McIntyre. Steven Sahin. Alexis Silverman. For Region 1 Orchestra, Jordan Dryer. Also Region Orchestra, Felix Gonzalez. Zach McIntyre. And then the capstone, New Jersey All-State Symphonic Band, Alexis Silverman. And for Junior High Region 1 Band, All North Jersey Region 1 Band Junior High, Benjamin McGlocken. And we had one student that was the representative for our school in the Junior Region Chorus, Amanda Finn. I skipped over this one, so I'll come back to them now. This is the All North Jersey High School Region 1 Chorus. Summer Parker. Danielle Geranti. Sarah Gervano. And Emily Perry. Following high school students are recognized as West Milford winners of the Young Artist Award, sponsored by the Ringwood Manor Artists Association last month. First place, Grade 12 Photography, Frank Leggona. Third place, Grade 12 2D Artwork, Ariana Blau. Honorable mention, Grade 12 Sculpture, Allison Koch. Second place, Grade 10 2D Artwork, Jen Vaughn. And third place, Grade 11 Sculpture, Samantha Carney. In the Wallkill Valley High School Art Show, second place honors, Faith Calamari. And second place ribbon, Allison Koch. And the last award that I have is that gentleman that we heard about before, who we know is not here, but remember this name. And he is the winner of the Passaic County Film Festival, Frank Leggona, first place Documentary, Risk of Life, and second place Public Service Announcement, Harroway. I'm presenting on behalf, a number of these awards are on behalf of Mr. Tana Costa, our athletic director, who is with one of the honorees right now at dinner. And this is, some of you might be noticing, a lot of high school students are not here for the awards. Very busy times at high schools with final exams and a lot going on. But I've been very pleased to present these awards to them when they see them in school tomorrow. Following high school student is being recognized as West Milford's recipient for the National Football Foundation College Football Hall of Fame Scholar-Athlete of the Year Award. That's Steven White. This year, as you know, we incorporate full value language into all of our programs throughout all of our district schools. And at the high school, we had a sponsored scholarship by our former Director of Education, Ms. Iris Rushling, for a student who embodies full value language, which is be here, be safe, be honest, respect self and others, set goals, let go, and move on. And I don't know if she's here this evening, but this is a young lady who's been through a lot this school year. And I'm very proud to recognize her tonight. And hopefully, if you stop by graduation, you'll see her. Sarah Littler. And the lady that I see sitting over here right now is being recognized as West Milford's recipient, Passaic County Coaches Association Female Athlete of the Year. And she was one of the three finalists for Passaic County, and that is Esther Enko. And our male athlete who is being honored this evening, as the train will attend us, Passaic County Coaches Association Male Athlete of the Year. He is tonight at the Boys All-County Dinner at the Tides of Heldon, and that is Colin Simony. We have also as a high school, one nominee for the New Jersey State International Athletic Association, NJSIAA, Scholar-Athlete of the Year Award. He was our overall sports nominee and winner recipient of a $500 scholarship for the NJSIAA, and that is Matt Fencella. This young man had a very distinguished career in our wrestling program at West Milford High School. One of the few to attain these honors, and he is recognized for his achievements. He was in the state wrestling tournament this past year, the first place district winner and the first place county winner, the sixth place state overall winner, and also with over 100 career wins, and that was Christian Duffless. Very special award, a very special young lady that we had the opportunity to nominate. And she was recognized for the National Girls and Women in Sports Award for our high school, and that's Briel Walter Hill. One student being recognized as nominee for the recipient of the Bergen Records Charlie Gill Scholarship Award for our high school, and that's Kate Porch. This young lady, I saw her in the guidance office after I learned that she had won this award. And I asked her if she got free Wendy's for a period of time. The results were, she told me no, but it's a very nice recognition anyway. Recipient of the Wendy's High School Heisman Award is Esther Enko. This young man was named to one more selected postseason football teams and recognitions. The New Jersey Super 100 Team for Football, Nick Lisa. Following two young ladies were recognized as recipients of the Patterson Old Towners Athletic Association Awards and the Bill and Sally Memorial Award for Basketball, Briel Walter Hill. And the Dark... And the Dark England Darrow Memorial Award for Softball, Kate Porch. Members of the Person's family are here this evening, I know. And I wish that Mr. Person is here to be able to join me to speak about the Rotary Youth Leadership Award Conference, the Ryla Conference every year takes place. And we work hand in hand with Rotary, and as a proud West Milford Rotarian, I'm very pleased to be a part of that and to recognize the students who are attending the conference. And they are Jacqueline Wilhelm. Nick McCormick.
Hi Ed.
Alex Person. These two young ladies will be headed to New Jersey Girls State Program, sponsored by our American Legion. Unfortunately, they aren't able to be here this evening. But they are Megan Hogan. And Christina Calabria. And on the American Legion Boys State side, as a proud Boys State alum, I am pleased to announce the students who are attending this year's program as chosen by our Legion, and that is Eric Larson. And Anthony Seville. We were very active this school year in our industrial arts program and really putting forward our STEM efforts and our efforts to help our students engage in a maker's culture. And this student was a winner of a statewide contest, the New Jersey Maker's Day Build Tech 3D Design Challenge. And her name is Celeste Layger. This student is being recognized for her selection to attend the Tri-State Leadership Conference with teen girls. with Teen Girls of Revolution with a full scholarship, provided by Finding the Fabulous in the fourth round. This is a student that has been very involved locally and in our school as well in various environmental causes. And she's tonight being recognized as a Borlaug Scholar and County and State Representative at the National Agroscience Youth Summit, Rebecca Burner. This is it, number 59. Bummer. All right. So this young man, each and every year, the National Merit Scholarship is announced. It is affiliated with College Ford. It is related to the PSAT that students take at the high school. And students who did exceptionally well on that test are recognized. Just so you have an idea of the scale of this, this recognizes the top 5% of all the students who took the PSAT at the same time that he did. And that was around the country, 1.5 million students. So this is quite a recognition and honor. And Jordan Chiracelli, National Merit Scholar. Well, that concludes the awards portion of tonight's meeting. So before we go on, I'd like to take a 10-minute recess. There's water and cookies over on the side. And congratulations to all the recipients this evening. Tony, anything else on superhand report? Is he gonna give his last one?
Okay, good evening. So I talked about this in the last board meeting a little bit, but I just want to thank you again for this amazing opportunity. I've really had fun with it. It's given me some great experience and insight into how government works, even on a small scale. And it's been my pleasure to serve. And truthfully, graduation is bittersweet, I don't know what to do. But I hope to see all of you at graduation, the ceremony, and thank you so much.
Thanks, Matthew.
We enjoyed it immensely, and we wish you all the best. As I said many times, you know you're gonna be very successful. And when you are successful, please come back to West Milford and say hello. Or stay here. What I'd just like to mention is that today, this morning, there was a wonderful ceremony over at Marshall Hill School. Mr. McCormick had a time capsule that was very 10 years ago, right on Flag Day. And they uncovered that today. They actually had, one of the parents who does a lot of work over at the school came with a bobcat and dug it up. They were able to locate the spot. They done that one up, and then they had students actually showed up from 10 years ago. I think the oldest one there might have been 22. So it was good to see them come back, and everybody was outside. It was just a wonderful, wonderful thing to read the articles and see the articles that were inside the time capsule. And they are planting, or I should say burying, another one that is from 2016 to 2026. But the original one is also being reburied. So in 10 years, the two of them will come out. So that's good. Also, as far as Marshall Hill, I also want to mention that next Monday at 9:00 a.m., they have a beautiful purple-leafed plum tree in front of the building that was planted in memory of our former board member, Valerie Guinness. In memory of Valerie Guinness. And they're gonna do a plaque presentation next Monday morning. So if you're available, that will take place at Marshall Hill at 9:00 a.m. And also the reminder for graduation. High school graduation will be Monday evening, June 20th, right up on Corbett Field. And follow the next evening on the 21st, right at the high school in the gym for McAfee School. So we'll be seeing everyone there. And just a reminder, next week's board meeting is on Wednesday, not Tuesday. We took the two places at one time, so we have protected that. So just a couple of reminders, and thank you.
Hey Barbara, Board Secretary's report. Okay, thank you. President's report. I really have nothing to report, except hopefully the majority of the board, we can get up there to the graduation ceremony of the high school and middle school next week. Hope to see all of you there. That's it. We'll move on to petitions and requests. Petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes for each petitioner for a period of 30 minutes, and then time permitting, other petitions and requests limited to five minutes per petitioner will be allowed until the 30-minute period transpires. All speakers are asked to give their full names, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during petitions and requests. Do we have anybody that wants to speak? We have two, Mr. Sidowitz. Okay. Uh, which, yeah, I don't know. Yeah, try.
Start the other one.
Let's do this one here. Is it working?
Yeah, it's working.
Oh, okay.
Hello, my name is Michael Gillan, G.I.L.L.N., 315 Woolley Road. And I am an employee of the West Milford Board of Education. Some of you may remember I spoke last month, and I touched on the hiring and application process with the board. And I voiced my concern, and I felt there was a little unfairness. And especially, there's a lot of employees who have put their time in and maybe not have received interviews over the years. I was one of those. I spoke about how I applied for a position at Maple Road School. Uh, I'm sorry, the Macman Middle School. I did not receive an interview, even though I had mailed in a letter and heard nothing. Went to the office, had to deliver the letter. Then I was told I didn't meet the deadline. So I could not get an interview. But I had a letter in the mail saying how my skills and all my work are very appreciated by the board. And after going through all the candidates, I did not meet the criteria. It was a tough decision, it was safe to say in the letter. And there is a candidate who will be read off at the June 22 meeting. I don't want to start rumors everything when people talk, and I do hear things. And also, I have employees, so I do hear stuff. There is a candidate who apparently is fresh out of high school, 19-years-old. So I'm a candidate who's been here 10 years, highly recommended. I always have letters of recommendation. And there are other people interviewed for that position who do have more time. I would like to put my phone number on the record, which is (973) 248-7434. Because I think maybe I deserve an explanation how somebody who does not have any experience working in the school system could be a candidate who's gonna be selected for a position when there are many people out there who are more qualified. And, you know, again, not to touch on rumors, but this person may have a friend who works in the board office. If I don't get the position, I'm not gonna be heard, because there could be somebody more qualified. But we can't be, as the biggest employer of West Milford, we can't have backdoor interviews, applications. And I really, you know, I don't think because somebody is related or has a friend that works somewhere, that they get a position over somebody else. That's all.
Thank you. Sidowitz?
Can somebody provide me some thoughts? Will Sidowitz, 694 Leishor Drive. I wanted to kind of go into the summer with just saying thank yous and congratulations and other things. First off, Mr. Sheikah, I think it's safe to say that the word interim has been given a new definition. So I want to say congratulations to you, and really, I wish you the best in your future, and hopefully have your time sometime soon. I want, I know that limited on the schools of character and principals and such, but I'm happy to see that so many schools are on board with the National School of Character, and there's only a couple more, and then you have the whole school system. So, you know, that great word should keep going. Congratulations to Ms. Novak, being able to direct the education. And I will try to utilize Google Sheets more than Excel. The board, just in preparing for my candidacy last year and reading through 2010 and beyond, this is a civil board, and it's great that even though there are differing points of view that can amicably be colludes with each other. So, you know, do your best, as I know you are in your hearts, and the school system will be great. Mrs. Reinhold, you can absolutely tell when somebody loves their work and they love the students that they see passing through their system. And there are people that do have a passion to what they do in teaching, but to see the love and absolute care and concern for those students. I have an assistant scout passenger that still tells me about the day he took him to the hospital when he split his head open. I know Mr. Sidowitz is not here, but it's a far cry from his 8th grade science class, and I want to give him a congratulations. And lastly, I'd like to thank Mrs. Francisco for honoring her work by answering any questions that I had. Sometimes I didn't like the answer, but then there were times there I was opened up to understanding the system, and you helped true your word as a professional. I want to say thank you. So to everybody, have a great summer, and congratulations to everyone.
Thank you, Will. I thought you were gonna make Mrs. Reinhold cry again. I don't have any tissues together. Would anybody else like to speak?
See, not like to close petitions or anything.
Thank you, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Dever.
I just want to say I'm a little bit disturbed. I don't like hearing stuff about backdoor deals and other rumors if they're not true. It doesn't put West Milford in the good light. It doesn't make anybody feel good about that. You know, these things that were brought up, they're very disturbing. And, you know, I don't like to see the negativity spread. If something's true, then it indeed needs to be looked into. But to spread rumors and negativity is not good for us, and not good for the town. And I don't appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Dever. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Marilyn. And Debbie. Any discussion? We have three items that we're moving, two under budget finance and one under education. No discussion?
No, I do, under budget finance, number one.
Well, I mean, we'll discuss it, but any, any you don't want to pull or... Yeah, this is the agenda. We only got three things on the agenda for this evening. Three items. Try, that's right. All right. So all in favor of adopting the agenda as presented?
Aye.
Thank you, any opposed? Thank you. We do have a motion that will need to go back into executive session to discuss personnel, student matters, and matters of attorney-client privilege.
It's, yeah.
9:15.
9:16.
Okay. So we'll, it's 9:16 now. I guess we'll make that motion for... 9:45? Okay.
You second on that?
Um, yes.
Second?
Thank you.
Welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I'll delay making further motions due to standard meeting time from 10 to 10:30.
Second?
Yeah, we're probably, well, yeah, go ahead. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Dever. Two opposed?
Yeah, we don't need to go.
I'm hoping not, I'm hoping not. So it's only, hey.
It would be nice.
It'd be nice. Go ahead. Well, I was just about to say, Mr. Drew, take it from here, but you kept going, so... Mr. Drew, would you introduce the two items for budget finance? Okay.
Item one says, "The recommendation superintendent to authorize a business administrator to secure professional development services in the areas of English, Latin, English, Arts, and management, competition, contracting, process." And my question about that is, that's the first I've seen of that, so what are you doing there?
Second, discussion.
Second. Thank you, Marilyn. Discussion.
Now you discuss.
Now you can ask that question, Mr. Drew.
What are we doing there? What is it?
We have discussed numerous times, just not in this particular language. We, I've presented at the Ed Committee numerous times over the years, not years, sorry. Over, I'm tired, I apologize. Over this school year about extensive professional development, K-8 for writers workshop, and also in our efforts for, let me just stop, you got it?
Yes.
Okay. So the language on this now is the process in which we can receive bids from vendors has to be approved in this, in this process.
Now, this is professional development for teachers.
Correct.
And it has, this motion has the business administrator procuring the professional development. What, I mean, there's input by the department supervisors and...
Correct. The Mrs. Sharon West and Mrs. Deborah Gattina are gonna be part of the process with me, as well as, you know, other members that we have not yet selected for in our panel. Once we receive the bids through the business department, then we will meet and discuss and go with the best suited for that process.
This is just a motion to get...
All the criteria is develop by the education side. Everything has to go through...
So you develop the criteria, you get the bids, and you give the back end.
Right.
Okay. It doesn't sound like that in writing.
Will we get to look at the amount before we finally...
Oh, absolutely. We have to, we have, we have to approve the contracts.
All right.
And the rationale for using for this is because we're using federal funds, and so they have a whole procurement process. different procurement process.
It's under Title I funds.
Okay.
All right.
Then I would like to make a motion to change the language, to just add the word "bids" after the word "procure professional development services," bids, in the areas because we're...
It's really a proposal. It's not really a bid.
All right, proposals. Are proposals, that's fine for me. Because then, otherwise, it sounds like you're just, it's a blank check. It looks like a blank check, the way it's written. So we should add the word "proposals," then that's obviously not a blank check, and it'll come back. I need a second for that, if anybody likes it.
Second.
Yeah. Any discussion on the motion?
Amendment.
The amendment to the motion, the proposals, let me get it out. Any discussion on that? Any discussion on the, on the change to the, the motion, the original motion, recommendation? Okay, no discussion. Can we have a vote on it then, please, Barbara?
Voice vote.
A voice vote? Okay.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Abstain.
You're abstaining, so one, two, three, four, five.
Are you abstaining?
Yeah, it...
No, I can abstain. Debbie abstained.
Debbie abstained, where's the motion carries then to change?
Amendment.
The amendment. Now we vote on the original, original motion, Steve. So no further discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Barbara, on item one under Business Budget and Finance.
Keeping them separate, too?
Yeah, he said he wanted them to be separate.
Mr. Schultz? Yes. Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, item number two, Steve?
I'd like to move item number two.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing, no, roll call.
I'm sorry, again, I'm confused about what this is. I have a brief...
Is this mine? Okay. Can I see this?
Yeah, the document I made on the...
Yeah, we, we...
Is it on Q-Sat?
Yeah, it's on Q-Sat.
No. We submitted our Comprehensive Equity Plan a few months ago. We received it. We were one of the few districts in the county that received approval at that point in time. Upon review, at the state level, there were some policies that were off in, in some of their language across the state, and they put out a, basically a statement to all districts for their corrective act, for their comprehensive equity plans, that these policies are not in compliance. So in order to fulfill the process, we have to, step one is to get a corrective action plan approved by the board, so then I can work to, work with you, actually, to update policy numbers and make sure that we have everything in place going forward.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Roll call, please, Barbara.
Mr. Schultz? Yes. Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes. Education. Mrs. Dwyer.
Okay, I'd like to move item one under Education.
Well...
Second, but it should be done after executive session.
Yeah.
Right. Don't call my name.
Well, no, you were supposed to say that this is gonna be done after executive session.
This is going to be done after executive session.
So it is... It is 9:23. Jamie, you want to make the motion to go into executive session?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session, 9:23.
Second.
All right, and that will be to discuss Personnel, Student Matters, and Matters of Attorney/Client Privilege. So we had the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Did we give a time limit? About 30 minutes will be in executive session. That's what we have on the, on the sheet, so. And then we'll vote on the HIB matters when we get back. So all in favor?
Aye.
And nobody is opposed?
Nope.
We'll get back to executive session.
We'll get back here.
And Mr. Dwyer?
Okay.
Would you, would you move item number one under Education, please?
Yes, I'd like to move item number one, had incident reports E4, M6, and H14.
Second.
Okay, discussion? None? Okay, roll call, please, Barbara.
Mrs. Schultz? Yes. Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
We're going to adjourn.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
I didn't want to say...
Just to make sure it gets on the...
Wow, wow, how did he miss Steve? That's right. All right. So that motion passed?
Yes.
I need a motion for adjournment. Marilyn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 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 okay. This meeting is officially adjourned. We shall see you at graduation on Monday.
I sent some moves, and Steve said he moved...
So it's your motion?
No, it was a second.
Second.
It was already done.